We're going to call this early scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order and see if there are any additions or deletions to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, we will deem the agenda as approved. Council announcements, any upcoming events that council wishes to highlight? We do have the, the farmer's market has their food truck event on Sunday, Sunday evening down on King Street, so that's coming up, so hopefully everyone can attend that. Council McDonald.
The Bridgewater Skate Park Committee is in the process of planning the soft opening, as well as Skate of the Art will be combined with that event this year. We have set a date for July fourteenth and definitely looking for volunteers to help us.
July fourteenth, fantastic, with the rain date of the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, correct.
Councillors have anything else?
I believe we have a home show this weekend, do we not?
We do, at the LCLC, yep.
The eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth.
Yep. Anything else? Council Graves.
And the United Way is starting Bikes for Kids tomorrow, so this is pre-bike selection. We have one hundred and twenty-nine bikes this year, which is a record. Bikes go from ages two up to ninety-two, so if you're, if you can't afford a bike and you would like them, please contact Pro Kids, Better Together Family Resource Center, Better, the Family Support Center, or the Town of Blue.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Council Frasier and I attended the, I have to look at this, it's not UNSM anymore, so it's the Nova Scotia Federation Municipalities, or NSFM, which is not a radio station, but now what UNSM is called. We tend the springy workshop shop and there were a number of actually really good topics and speakers, and one of them I just gave the CAO on extended producer, oh, what's it called?
Responsibility.
Responsibility, right, so dealing with solid waste, and we're one of the few provinces that does not have a fee attached to goods that are sold. At places like Walmart and like the larger box stores, like the example they gave was in, in British Columbia, I think they said one one-hundredth of a cent is added to every box of Kraft Dinner, for example, but in BC that returned sixteen million dollars, I think, to, to the solid waste facilities like we have, and so right now, our taxpayers pay that out of their pocket. What I found really interesting was they said it's already baked into the price here, so there wouldn't be any additional cost to the goods in Nova Scotia, we're just kind of paying for them without getting any of the benefits, so something like that that we learned will hopefully come forward and we'll see where that goes, so. It was a really good, really good workshop, did you have anything to add?
Opportunity to network and hear some other municipalities' best practice, so it's a good, good turnout.
Yep, that was well, well attended. Anything else? Hearing nothing, we're a little early, but it looks like our delegation is here, so I'll invite whoever's coming up from Small World to, to speak. And welcome. Hi, and just a reminder, you have, we have a time limit of ten minutes.
We will keep it as short as we can.
And that doesn't include questions we have, so you have ten minutes excluding whatever questions council has, so I'll turn the floor over to you.
All right, just wait for Charlie to get the slideshow going. So, good evening, my name is Samantha, I've been a volunteer on the board of directors for Small World since two thousand and six. I started as the secretary and then moved on to the chairperson. My children have also attended Small World through the summer programs and the preschool programs, so I'm very familiar with the programming that they offer as well. So we are here today to ask for you to lease to our center a small portion of the forest adjacent to our center on York Street, a forest which the children of our center have come to adore, as you can see from the pictures here. As we do our presentation, this slideshow will provide you with glimpses of the forest play, the things that the children have been experiencing at Small World for the, for the last several years. So a little bit about Small World, and it's an award-winning childcare center, we're here in Bridgewater, and we serve one hundred and twenty-five children ages eighteen to twelve years across the so shore. We're a nonprofit organization, and actually this year will be our fortieth anniversary in the community, so we're looking forward to celebrating that. We're a charitable organization and we serve a wide diversity of families, so thirty percent of our families receive subsidization. We have children that have needs, children that live in apartments and do not have direct access to outdoor play areas when they are at home. So it's important that we create accessible spaces for our families. For some children, the only time they spend playing in the forest is while they are attending our programs. So we always have great community support, for example, Darcy and Karen Bears are community members, and they've donated enough slash suits so that all the kids can go out and play in the rain, and they really enjoy playing in the puddles on, on wet days, so. As you have read in our letter, we had forwarded along, our request is to enter into a lease agreement for a ten-year lease for a dollar per year for the hundred-foot wide section of forested land on York Street. If after ten years there are no development pressures on the lot, the lease may be continued with agreement of all parties, or if development pressures exist, then the agreement could be ended at that time. In addition, we ask for permission, possibly as soon as possible, to create an accessible gravel path into the land parcel mentioned above. We have one child currently who attends our center, who is in wheelchair, and we want to be able to take him into the woods so he can participate with all the other kids. The path would also allow strollers to enter the forest, making it more accessible to younger families, and we're partnering currently with Helping Nature Heal on this project, and they've generously offered to give a hundred, ah, sorry, a thousand dollars in services to help us with donating the gravel and the sand, they're going to see if other folks will help us with that. So now I'd like to call upon a couple of our families who'd like to say a few words about what having access to the forest means. Who's up first?
Hello, members of council, my name is Kate, and this is Dylan, and I'm here to share my, my feelings as both a parent of a Small World family and also as an environmental educator. So we chose Small World because of its excellent reputation in our community, and particularly forest reputation for getting kids outside a lot. So the children play on, on average between two and five hours a day outside at Small World, and much of this is off-site in the forested lands or the trails that are nearby the center. So we know that today children aren't getting nearly enough fresh air and physical activity, and the fact that Small World really has, holds this value makes it a, a place that we're really happy to, to support and have, have our family there. In my work, we're often reminded of the fact that the number-one predictor of, of an adult who has environmental values and is an environmental citizen is the amount of and the quality of their outdoor play in wild spaces as a child. And so for me, you know, we have an opportunity here to, the town of Bridgewater has an opportunity here to increase children's access to wild spaces in a, in a pretty simple way. I'm supportive of this particular piece of land because there are already one hundred and twenty-five children who use that forest every day, and some, some math that Donna, the executive director, did was calculated that, that at a minimum, there are nine hundred and sixteen hours that children spend playing in that forest every week, and I challenge you to think of another park in town where that number of children hours are spent each week all year round. Yeah, so most of the stories that I hear from Dylan about his time at Small World are about playing in, in the forest and nature, and I would really like to see children have the ability to have those kind of memories being made for many years to come.
Hi, thanks for having us here this evening. I'll, I'll be quite, quite brief, my name is Donnie, and this is my son, Jack. I've lived in Bridgewater the better part of twenty years, and Jack has been attending Small World for almost four years now. Very similar to Kate and their family, the outdoor play was a big part of our choice for, for sending Jack to Small World. The days he comes home muddy are the days he comes home happy, and, and this, this is a really important part of, of what they offer at Small World. It, when, when he first started, quite often we'd go over on the weekends and just play in the woods, so he could show me his environment, and when we have people in from out of town, family members come to visit, it's, it's not uncommon that Jack asks them to come over and have a walk in the woods and see where he lives and plays, so thanks very much for your sincere consideration.
And I have, how about Jack?
Oh.
So I have a question for the friends that have come up today, my question is, what do you love about the forest at Small World? Can I have your camera? Can you tell us what you love about the forest at Small World?
I love the trees about the forest. And I love the book and the forest.
They're going to help you with a little job here in a minute, we're going to turn it back over to Sam.
All right, thank you so much, we appreciate you sharing why the forest is so important to you. So there's many benefits to having children play in a high-quality natural play space, as Kate was speaking about, and in addition to the benefits that the one hundred and twenty-five children experience at Small World, we encourage it to be used by others in the community, so we already see, as Donnie had mentioned, that children are visiting there on the weekends and coming into the playground space, and we also invite other childcare organizations in the community to come and share this space. The YMCA comes with the after-school program, and they will visit the forest as well. So with the paths and the things that we're doing, the improvements we're making, we're hoping that this will become a community space that all families around our area can, can come and play. So to conclude, we do have an invitation for all of you, we would like to ask for all of you to come to the forest on Thursday, May the twenty-fourth, at ten-thirty in the morning, and the children would love to give you a tour of the forest and have you see the forest through their eyes, so.
Thank you.
We hope that you'll have a chance to, to come have the tour before you make a final decision on this, so that you can truly experience what all the little ones love and adore. So thank you very much for your time, and we're happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions for members of council? Council Graves.
So you mentioned that you need a gravel walkway, do you think there will be any other needs or any other requests over the next ten years, or do you think?
From you as the town?
Yeah.
Don, do you want to speak to that?
For right now, it's just the accessible path that, that we will take care of ourselves and manage, so that's it for now.
Other questions? Council Thorburn.
I suppose over time, and I've walked by there many times with a dog and see when they're playing, but there'll be some maintenance required, with maybe tree removal or stuff that we have in the park, so would you have somebody help do that?
Well, right now, we like the trees there because that's what the children use to build. We, we don't build, take from anything alive, only thing, the blowdowns, plus it gives a habitat for all the insects and forest animals, so that gives us a chance to observe, so right now, we love the blowdowns and everything in the forest.
Okay.
So I don't know, like if there was something that is extremely hazardous, I guess we would, you know, figure it out, we could, we would ask if, if the townspeople or if our volunteers could help.
That was my question, I did see, you know, the teepee or something there, you know, my travel.
We have, there's, there's things going up and down all the time, yeah, yeah, so the, the, I don't know if you noticed the one with the ribbon, there's like a lot of ribbon around, that's been there for five years, and the kids from the skateboard park walk through there every day, and they've never taken it down or destroyed anything. The only thing we had destroyed was what we call the haunted house, which is down the path on the other side of the LCLC, there's a little forest place in there, and they had built something that got destroyed, so then they put up signs and said, hey, we're the kids from Small World, we built this, please, please, you know, help us keep our structures, and that's all it took. It's pretty amazing.
Don, are you, are you firm on a ten-year lease, or would, would Small World consider a three- or five-year lease?
We would consider a three- or five-year lease, absolutely.
And the space in behind the building, to my recollection, I think it was there a few months ago or something, is, it's quite swampy, is that why you're not going that way?
That's a good question, I, I don't know how we start, I think we started, the children started building things very close to the center because it was safe, you know, they felt, and then it just, it's grown a little, when you come to visit, you'll see it's grown a bit.
I, I ask only because per planning, there looks like eventually there very well may be a, a street through there, who knows how that'll end up, but next to the, the property you're asking for, and so that makes me, I guess, a little concerned, if I was a, I am a parent, sometimes forget that, that those kids playing that close to potentially that street might be an issue versus going back where we can kind of, could potentially protect a bit more, I guess.
Right, I, I guess, like, does the town know when this proposed road would be put in place?
Probably not.
Probably never.
So maybe that's something we can negotiate closer, like, to the time, like, right now, we've been there since two thousand and seven, so we've been playing in that woods for quite a long time.
Right.
It's just, I think, a comfort to us and our families if we could say, like, at least a hundred feet is, is something that, you know, we can use and we can get a wheelchair up there, that's one of our big concerns this year, is we want this little guy to be in the forest this summer.
Right.
He'll be there every day, and we had the hippo camp last, it was really hard getting him, getting him into the forest without a path.
Right, okay.
Is there any other questions for members of council? So this is on our agenda later on, just so you don't, you aren't disappointed, we can't actually deal with this tonight, we have to refer this to staff for some reports because, you know, there's, there's certain steps, if we're going to make a change, it has to go through a first reading and a second reading, and so staff will give us our legal options and obligations and things like that, so it is something that we can't deal with tonight. I didn't want, didn't want anyone to, to think that we were able to make a decision tonight, but the motion will be, if council approves it, to refer to staff to get a report back to us so that we can make a decision, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just with that in mind, if you'll indulge me, if we'll just, why don't we skip down to correspondence for action, and then if someone is prepared to make a motion on the Small World Learning Center lease request? And let's, if there's more discussion that wishes to take place, any further questions or questions of staff? No, hearing none, someone's prepared to make a motion on item eight point one?
Sure. I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater, refer the request from Small World Learning Center as contained in document eighteen dash zero-six-nine to staff for report.
Can I have a second here, please? Council Thorburn, any further discussion?
Deputy Mayor? Just, it might be helpful for Nick, I guess, to have some clear direction, I guess, on what we're asking, not just that property, but so, too, poor fellow.
You interpret the answer.
That's okay, we all do.
Yeah, I'm used to it. So, Nick, I guess, do we have any plans to put a road in there eventually? I mean, it's, it's drawn there and so on, so I'd like to know that, I mean, that whole area is developing relatively rapidly, and there's not a whole lot of space to develop in the industrial park, or whatever we're calling that area now, before perhaps going across to other lands we own, so just those kinds of scenarios, and then I guess perhaps even the condition of the space in behind is an option, may, I don't know.
Yeah, so we could ask for that information?
Sure, I can, speaking very quickly.
Okay.
The, there is a planned future street, Cook Road is planned to come out, as you said, to, to York Street, that's, that's very much dependent on developed pressures.
Right.
It's private investment that will build that street, so it would go most likely hand-in-hand with development pressures for this one hundred-foot wide piece of land next to Small World, so, you know, that land would be next to Small World, but also a lot this future street. There's about five hundred feet or so of frontage on York Street available, and also lands on, on Cook Road and Lancel Drive as well. As you said, it is, it's developing, there's interest in, in purchasing lands from the town, especially on the York Street stretch, but it's, it's really difficult to say when that particular portion, this, this particular portion would be, would be pursued, and with Cook Road, it's a big project to build a street, in my opinion, it would be unlikely to, to happen in the near future.
Sure.
Especially because it has to go through that wet area that you described, it's inclined these properties, but it's not very developable back there.
Good question. Well, and to just piggyback on your question earlier, maybe some options on what a five- and a ten-year lease would look like, might be valuable, and, and the impact on that, especially if Small World's seeking donations from, for example, from Helping Nature Heal, is that based on them having that property for ten, ten years? You don't want to lose someone's investment because we've cut a few years off, just maybe some options like that. Any other questions? No, hearing none, ready for the question? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Okay, we look forward to a staff report. In your package, you have the minutes from April ninth and twenty-third, council meetings, any questions, comments on those? No, hearing none? We'll deem the minutes as, as approved. Nobody ever wants to stay for the fun. All right, planning items, first reading of two-ten York Street rezoning and development agreement, and Mr. Brown is here.
Oh, awesome. Can I get a, can I get a picture with you with that? Do I get to keep that, or do you get to keep that?
You can let him keep it.
Can I have that? Awesome, thank you.
I feel like Nick had that planned because he wasn't ready for his presentation. All right, Mr. Brown.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This application is for, it's map and text amendments to the land use bylaw, we're calling it a rezoning, and application for a development agreement, so those are all happening concurrently for two-ten York Street. So the applications, well, first, the proposals to use the property at two-ten York Street as an office, so that requires a rezoning, so that rezoning would be from special commercial C-eight to downtown residential, C-four, or R-four, I'm sorry. In addition, there'd be a requi, there is a requested development agreement, so that's for an office use in the downtown residential R-four zone. The land use and zoning, so the zoning map, you can see here, if you can see it, special commercial C-eight, future land use map, it is designated, it's actually, that says downtown residential, it's a mapping error, it's, it's medium-density residential is the future land use designation for the subject property. So a little background, there's a history of commercial uses on the subject property. The building was initially the McKenzie Bus Line's office, and there's a bus stop just in front, and there's a little widened parking area there just beyond the, the outside edge, the, the white line of the travelway. The property was converted to an electronic repair shop, and now currently it, it's vacant, waiting for approved amendments to allow an office in the area, or on the property. The, the area is, is characterized by a well-defined and, and long-established non-residential component, and that's key to the development agreement application. There's Veterans Memorial Park across Victoria Road, so this is very close to that, that intersection of Victoria Road, Veterans Memorial Park and Brookside Cemetery, across the street from that, across York Street from that, is the old McKenzie Bus Line's garage property, which has institutional zoning, and around the corner, just down Victoria Road, is the Mon's Monuments, which is a special commercially zone property. The proposal is to convert the existing electronic repair, Robert Brown's electronic repairs, to an office use, so, if you're a conventional office, but just, you know, typical office, and massage therapy, so we've considered massage therapy to be an office use for this application. The other part to the proposal is a four-hundred-and-eighty-four square foot expansion to the, to the existing building, and that would be to accommodate the office use, it would result in a building at twelve-hundred-and-thirty-two square feet. A little policy context, so for uses in the special commercial zone, the municipal planning strategy states, should these commercial uses be discontinued, council shall consider rezoning them in accordance with the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. So again, that's, that's medium-density residential, which leads to either the zoning, medium-density residential zone, or downtown residential zone. In this case, downtown residential is the predominant zone in the York and Queen Street area, so that's the, that's the target zone. So it fulfills the policy, the direction that the municipal planning strategy gives staff for the special commercial zone. Also, as it relates to the development agreement, it shall be a policy council to consider the following developments by development agreement in the downtown residential zone. So with the rezoning in place, the R-four zone allows for proposals for offices, and there's a couple of criteria that need to be met, the use is in an area influenced by a substantial, well-defined, long-established, non-resi, non-residential land use component, that's right, and that's back to the, the Brookside Cemetery, and Veterans Memorial Park, and the other non-residential uses in the area, and that the maximum floor area does not exceed, in this case, forty-three-hundred square feet, thereabouts, so that previous slide, the resultant square footage of just over a thousand square feet meets that criteria. So there's a public participation meeting held February twenty-first here in council chambers, two adjacent property owners from across the street, a couple, plus the applicants were in attendance, overall, those in attendance were supportive of the change, the, the meeting revolved around concerns about on-street parking in that area, just road, general road safety and, and making sure that traffic continues to flow with the intersection at Victoria Road right there. Overall, public were, were satisfied with the meeting, at the end of the meeting, so no major concerns arose from that public participation meeting. The proposed land use bylaw amendments, it's, it's actually to strike out Robert Brown's electronics, his electronic repairs, is, is the actual, actual identified use in table T of the land use bylaw, and the proposed map amendment to the, to the zoning map of the land use bylaw is to rezone the property from special commercial C-eight to downtown residential R-four. So with that, the recommendation from staff is for council to give first consideration to the proposed map and text amendments of the land use bylaw, and for council to give consideration of the proposed development agreement, and for council to schedule a public hearing for proposed map and text amendments to the land use bylaw and the proposed development agreement for Monday, June eleventh, at the regularly scheduled council meeting, six p.m. here at Town Hall, council chambers.
Thank you. Questions? Questions for members of council? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Nick, I thought in a previous presentation on this that, I think it was before the extension was planned, that parking was going to be in by the building, and now that obviously can't occur, I assume.
Yeah, the applicant, we were going back and forth with, with the parking, so if I could, maybe I'll find this, this site plan, where that, so initially where the pro- Where that, so initially where the proposed addition is shown on this site plan, that was to be some onsite parking. The applicant decided, so they were weighing options whether they would go to two stories versus one. They see the need for an addition to the property. They decided to take care of it now through the development agreement process. The proposed addition, the best place for the proposed addition is on the south side of the building. So therefore, the parking request went away. The development agreement is written in such a way that it talks about parking. But if parking is wanted later on for this site, it would be evaluated at that time by the traffic authority in terms of site access, by the land use bylaw, in terms of location and distance from Wildbrook, making sure there's proper separation. But at this particular time, with this proposal that we have in front of us now, there's no onsite parking. They're going to use on-street parking.
Okay. So right now, when I think about this, this street on a regular school day, we've got cars coming easily halfway down to Victoria, I guess it is. Most likely teachers parking there and so on on the street. So how, this is a relatively big space, I guess, how, is there like a requirement based on square footage? How many cars? I guess it's not onsite parking, so that doesn't matter either.
There is a requirement for parking that comes with commercial development.
Okay.
Just generally.
Yeah.
For office uses, it's three hundred, it's one space per three-hundred-and-twenty-two square feet of area. So in this case, the requirement would be for four onsite parking spaces. Through the development agreement process, that requirement can be lifted. It's negotiable. So staff have discussed this. We discussed it at the public participation meeting with the adjacent landowners and with the applicant. And staff are comfortable that this use can be accommodated by on-street parking in the area. You mentioned, you know, there are vehicles parked on York Street. Generally, in, if you're taking this block in the context with Victoria Road and Empire Street there, more so towards the Empire End. Most likely, teachers and people who are at the school. So staff feel that there isn't enough parking pressure at this end of York Street to require onsite parking.
Okay. Councilor Graves.
So just continuing on with parking, the four parking spots, does that include staff as well?
Yeah, yeah, so when, the land use bylaw has parking requirements and, you know, based on size for every type of land use, pretty much. So it is supposed to take in consideration staff and visitor parking.
Because I would imagine four spots, you get the owner and a staff member in there and a couple of others in there.
Councilor Frasier.
Did the previous business owner have onsite parking? Or was it all-street parking?
It's been on-street.
On-street, that's what I thought.
But it was a repair shop where you're not typically going in and spending an hour. You're dropping something off or picking something up and then going again. So it's a different use, I would suggest.
A little bit different use. Just trying to think what household repairs, I can't think exactly what that parking requirement is. It's probably fairly close, but you're right, it's a different type of, excuse me, of use that would probably require less parking. The massage therapy component that is being proposed here, it's one client at a time, we're told. So now there may be some overlap, that's how those types of clinics operate. But as far as the office, it's really just the landowner who doesn't expect much traffic, many people coming and going. So I, we believe that the parking that this will, that this will create or the parking requirement that this might create, that it doesn't warrant off-street parking, sorry.
Any further questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Frasier.
Yes, Your Worship, that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give first consideration to the proposed map and text amendments of the land use bylaw as contained in Appendix A of Document eighteen dash zero-one-eight A. Give first consideration to the proposed development agreement as presented in Appendix B of Document eighteen dash zero-one-eight A. And schedule a public hearing for the proposed map and text amendments to the land use bylaw and proposed development agreement as contained in Appendices A and B of Document eighteen dash zero-one-eight A for Monday, June eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, during the regular council meeting, regular meeting of council, beginning at six P M. in council chambers at Town Hall.
Have a second, please, Councilor McGinnis. Further discussion?
Just a brief comment. I don't see parking as a major issue with this property. It was a bus terminal, I can't imagine there are buses going in and out there. That's a very wide street. I would probably be very frustrated if we turned something like this down because we have teachers taking up all the parking on the street. This is a taxpaying entity that I think is good for the area, so I'll be supportive.
So I, I'm supportive of this, I just have a quick question. So let's fast forward five years from now and there's a change of use. So it's still office use, but it's no longer massage therapy. I don't know, I'll just throw something out there, like, let's say it's accounting. And there's three accountants in there and it's tax season and they see three or four or five clients at a time. Does that change of use trigger any ability for us to reevaluate the parking situation or require onsite or off-site at another location, for example, over on the other kitty corner from that where there is the lot? Does that trigger any mechanism for us to?
If the proposed use or the new use is considered an office, then no. There wouldn't be a trigger for a parking requirement or some sort of agreement to use another lot. The permission that would be allowed through the development agreement for an office, it stands. So no parking required. So if the next use is also considered an office, they are still under the provisions of the development agreement. And so there would be no, there'd actually be no development permit issued, there wouldn't be a change of use from our perspective.
I mean, not, I think it would be counterintuitive for someone to, they'd offer a poor service to their customers if their customers couldn't find parking. So I think it would police itself, but I was just curious to see if a change of use triggered anything.
And I do want to say that the applicant is interested in parking. They just weren't sure that they wanted to. The two parking spaces that could be accommodated on the north side of the building, so between the building and Wildbrook, it would eliminate one current parking space on York Street. So they hadn't made a decision, and I believe they still haven't made a decision whether or not that's cost-effective for them.
So there is still room, though, they could add parking if they want.
Yeah, and the development agreement does talk about parking and it permits it. It just, we need to go through the process with the traffic authority and the land use bylaw to ensure it's done properly. They just weren't sure at this particular time that they wanted to add it to the site plan.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. All right, our next item is first reading of concurrent amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw. Developments of up to sixty thousand square feet. And obviously a large project and one that's got some attention in the public. So, Mr. Brown, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. So the applications for municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw amendments to the group commercial C four zone. What this effectively does is it changes the, changes the process where developments that are currently fifty thousand, approximately fifty thousand square feet and/or less, we go through the site plan approval process. These amendments would allow developments up to approximately sixty thousand square feet to go through that same site plan approval process. So it's not changing anything to do with the permitted developments, just which process larger developments would go through. There are, sorry, I'll go back. There's a little zoning map inset here, or a portion of the zoning map showing two incets. Those are the group commercially zoned properties. And the next couple of slides will show them in more detail. But the group commercial zone is located in two areas of town. Inset one is the east side and inset two is the west side. So the east side group commercial, commercially zoned properties are South Shore Mall site and the Days Inn. On the west side, it's the former Canadian Tire slash Lions Den. It's Goodyear Edwards Dental, Denture Clinic, Dufferin Place. The Plaza Lot, which also includes Pizza Delight, Liquor Store, the subject site, because this application was triggered by a proposal at two-thirty-six Dominion Street. Oikels Bottle Exchange and UPS Store, Arby's, McDonald's, the old Flying Dutchman nine-unit residential, KFC and the Bridgewater Hotel. A little bit about the processes, so the as-of-right processes in the group commercial C four zone. There are thirty-four permitted uses in that zone. Of those uses, any development up to approximately fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand square feet are allowed by right or as-of-right. So that's a process that, you know, you come in, you make application, you receive a development permit and a building permit. You're dealing with staff, the development officer and the building officials. The next step up is the site plan approval process. So those same thirty-four permitted uses and multi-unit residential with ground floor commercial. Between the sizes, and this is gross floor area, I just want to make that clear. Between the sizes of approximately fifteen thousand square feet to fifty thousand square feet, through the site plan approval process, there's notification to adjacent property owners after the development officer. For myself in the third person. After I gave, after I gave approval, I send out letters to adjacent property owners within a hundred feet. And they have the ability to appeal that decision to council. The criteria used is, in the land use bylaw, there is specific criteria for commercial developments by site plan approval. But it's also all the other requirements of the land use bylaw that are evaluated through this type of proposal. The development agreement process in the group commercial zone, those thirty-four permitted uses and straight-up multi-unit residential over fifty thousand square feet in gross floor area. So as you know, the development agreement process, there's notification to adjacent landowners, public ads and a public meeting process. The criteria are found in section seventeen point three-three of the municipal planning strategy. And the development agreement process is a negotiation between the applicant, staff and council. The land use bylaw requirements become guidelines. Impact of these proposed changes, it applies to all sixteen properties in the group commercial zone. And that's very important to not lose sight of. In all, it streamlines the process from the developer's perspective for larger developments. So the increase the threshold from approximately fifty thousand square feet to sixty thousand square feet. Site plan approval process is typically four weeks, where the development agreement process can be four months. The, on the other hand, there's less opportunity for public input for those same larger developments where the development agreement process has more of a notification process and a larger appeal process where aggrieved persons can appeal to the U A R V. And then the site plan approval process, it's an appeal of approval to council. I have here, less variability from the land use bylaw. So again, the site plan approval process, those criteria and those requirements are rigid. There's really no room to maneuver. If there's an eighty-two-foot setback requirement from the structure to the property line, that's what it has to be. Through the development agreement process, it becomes a little bit more flexible. Now, it could go either way, doesn't necessarily mean that it would lessen. But there is more variability with the development agreement process. So the applicant that is proposing these changes that are in front of council is Home Hardware. Two-thirty-six Dominion Street, this is the site plan. There's three access points, one on High Street. That may change and be more lined up with the YMCA driveway. It is currently not shown that way. That is something that we would work through, through, well, either the site plan approval process or development agreement process, whatever process it ends up going through. There's a crosswalk there that we have to keep in mind of. There are the two access points on Dominion Street, one directly across from the Plaza entrance and that would be just beside John Tiger. And then one further down Dominion Street. And that is, that's a loading area, so the loading area is on that back corner, that's for truck traffic. So this is a site plan we've been presented with. It's preliminary, it hasn't been fully evaluated because we haven't had the application because that is subject to these amendments. But, you know, we have looked at it and there is, through the land use bylaw, abutting zone requirements that does require this structure to be eighty-two feet or twenty-five meters from property lines of residentially zoned properties. So Spence Street has residential properties, residentially zoned. Forest Hill Road has residentially zoned properties. This site plan is meeting that criteria. There's also a requirement for a twenty-foot buffer, six-meter buffer vegetative that needs to be effective within three years of planting. And it is there, its purpose is to effectively screen the commercial use from the residential. And a requirement for a seven-foot-high, two-meter-high fence or berm right at the property line, just in on the subject site. So those are our abutting zone requirements of the land use bylaw. Staff feel that those requirements, the land use bylaw between the abutting zone requirements, the layout or design of a parking area and loading area requirements and other just general requirements that we would have, including the site plan criteria, it's a good process. And those requirements, staff feel properly protect owners of adjacent residentially zoned properties. So there was a public participation meeting held last week, May tenth, at the NSCC. There were nineteen members, or nineteen people in total in attendance, fifteen were members of the public, there were four with the applicant group. Concerns included noise generally, both from the rooftop and from truck deliveries in the evening. So there were some questions and some back and forth surrounding when deliveries may take place. The impact of increased traffic on the area, so there was a concern about trucks going up Dominion Street from, excuse me, the King Street area. And existing parking, whether it's meeting the town's requirements for parking. And, well, all of the existing parking arrangements. So that was just, that's more so about what's happening onsite currently. I guess in the past, it's been used in various ways that has caused some disturbance to neighbors. Proposed trucking routes is what was actually a major point that was raised at the meeting. Staff have received emails from and phone calls from Aberdeen Road residents because we can't forget that these amendments impact other areas of town and group commercially zoned properties. zoned properties and those adjacent to them. But those those questions were more so clarifying why exactly they were receiving a letter. Generally, there's support of these amendments through those conversations and also with conversations with the impacted property owners, the subject property owners, so those that own the the C four zoned properties. There is, there's general satisfaction with the with the process. And there's one one property owner on Spence Street that is asking many questions that staff feel that the, whether it's the site plan approval process or the development agreement process, that those questions, those concerns will be satisfied. So the recommendation the staff have for councils to give first considerations to propose concurrent text amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw and to schedule a public hearing to take place during the regular council meeting on Monday, June. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Nick. Questions from members of council, Councilor McDonald?
So Home Hardware's a busy spot, and the the current traffic patterns are fairly busy as well. Does this kind of development change the traffic patterns enough that we need to think about traffic lights or how the intersections work? Will it change the traffic patterns enough that we may have to change the the setup?
Yeah, it's a good question, because because where we are right now, you know, in dealing with amendments to the land use bylaw and municipal planning strategy, we haven't analyzed things of that nature that closely. I will say that that commercial development generally does not trigger a traffic impact analysis, but because this is a large development, that is, it's always an option for our traffic authority to want to evaluate truck patterns. Time of day, it seems to be a concern. And just general truck routes. In speaking with the applicants and during the public meeting, it was noted that the the possibly obvious truck route would be from exit thirteen. So down Victoria Road, High Street, and and then onto Dominion Street and into the site. And that, now, no guarantees were given, but that, you know, deliveries occur during work hours and not late at night. These 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 residential properties, more so on Forest Hill Road, have been living next to a commercial for many years with the Plaza and have been dealing with truck deliveries and noise during the night. And that seems to me to be more so an issue that is that comes with with grocers and not so much retail development. But in the end, at the meeting, the representative from 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 Home Hardware said that they would endeavor to have deliveries during work hours unless, you know, something unforeseen, you know, happens where where it has to be a little later. And regarding the the traffic lights, there is a trigger with the Old Town Hills development for that intersection at High and Dominion to become signalized after a certain buildout. So that's already been thought about, and that area's been been also evaluated with the with other proposals in the area. So our traffic authority is mindful of of.
That's kind of where I was going, is two fairly large developments with entrance in both in in very similar areas. You know, the the impact of two developments at once, if we, of course, you've thought ahead. Can I ask, just while I'm on traffic, the Tim Hortons drive-through often backs up into the street. Does this propose to affect that positively or negatively in any way, or does everything remain the same?
It's a good question. I don't see it affecting it either way. It's tough with Tim Hortons and their drive-throughs. You know, they made those changes five years ago, six years ago to create that very long stacking lane, and they're still running into issues. It's a conversation that in time, just as it happened before, between staff and the current land or the the former landowners, because that's part of this leased area. Tim Hortons is part of two thirty, of of the subject property. So staff would would address that with the property owners if it becomes a safety concern, you know, to to worry about that.
Okay, thank you.
I had the media called, and one of their questions was regarding truck traffic, and I guess someone had asked them, well, what happens if all these trucks go up Dominion Street? So I talked to a friend of mine who deals with the logistics of truck traffic, and the answer was basically, trucking is all based on efficiency. And the least efficient way to get to that property would be to go along King Street and up Dominion. And so it would be almost cost prohibitive for them to go that way. And as as Nick said, it would be to go around to exit thirteen, or if something was wrong there, even if they came off at exit twelve, it would be to go up to Victoria and still come across High Street, just because trying to navigate a truck, I mean, I see them when they go into Gauze Home Furnishing, where they do turn up Dominion and try to navigate that corner. So I was less concerned about that and more concerned about the timing of when these deliveries would take place, but hearing that they're during business hours, because you are right that the other issue is grocer-related, as we've received phone calls, you know, going back ten years now, with truck deliveries at six o'clock in the morning, refrigerator trucks running all night, where it wouldn't be that same, there'd be no refrigerated trucks certainly parked at Home Hardware.
And I will say, the site plan approval process and through the development agreement process as well, staff have the have the ability to make sure that the the type and location of lighting is directed on the subject building, things like that. But when it comes to noise, it's it's silent.
Counselor Harmon?
Yeah, I lived up there since nineteen eighty, and I I can't remember ever seeing a truck come up Dominion Street downloading the Plaza. They always come down High Street and go in around the back. And I think when we brought in that noise, I haven't had any complaints, and I'm walking there all the time, and I and I think it's been some dialogue with the grocery store and the neighbors, and they're kind of working together. They've got signs posted to shut off when you're idling and do different things, and it works quite well. And on this new development, when I first moved there, there was a little strip mall on the backside of that, right across from Community College, and I think there was a Sowie store, then there was a Ford dealership there years ago, and then there was a Royal Bank on the corner. And on that property, you have three different entryways until, it's not like across the river, where you have one entry point, the superstore. You're coming from two directions, three entry points, and I see it nothing but positive as I'm concerned. And I'll make that motion if you so wish.
Did you just have a question?
One more.
Yep, and then you go ahead.
Where did that initial fifty thousand square feet number come from?
That's a great question, because I already know the answer.
Do you? I don't. I I don't know.
Because that's the answer, because Director Planning said it's arbitrary. It's an arbitrary number that someone might have just said, let's go with fifty thousand.
It really is, and I believe it's been in our planning documents since nineteen eighty-eight. I can't tell you where that came from.
So it, the answer I got was it could have just have easily been sixty already or or seventy or forward, like it wasn't, it wasn't because of a set of rules that we're now changing. That's a good question, glad you asked it. You prepared to make a motion, Counselor?
Yes, I am. The town council of Tim Bridgewater give first consideration to propose concurrent amendment to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw is contained in Appendix E of Document eighteen dash zero six three eight and scheduled a public hearing for June eleventh, two thousand eighteen during a regular meeting of council.
Second.
Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, questions being called, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried. Our next item is Lunenburg County Multipurpose Center Corporation operating estimates for two thousand eighteen nineteen, and just as the person I was going to ask if he wanted to add comment leaves. Those are there for your information. Are there, were there any questions coming out of those?
Surely a better way to do business than we went through last year.
A hundred percent better. Yeah, yeah, no, we we turned a corner. I can tell you that at the LCLC board meeting this Thursday, the ad hoc committee that was struck, which is myself, Counselor Ernst from Municipal District Lunenburg, and Greg Amos, as a founding member of that facility, we came up with a number of suggestions to kind of streamline the way we do things, everything from looking at the MOU to how we do fundraising and the budget process and stuff like that. So that's going to be presented this Thursday. So between turning the first corner at the budget process and actually doing well, and a lot of credit to the C A O for for leading that charge and pushing back a little bit to this proposal that I I hope is well received, and I will give Counselor Ernst a whole bunch of credit because he did a lot of the heavy lifting on that. So he can take a lot of the ownership of that, whether he wants to or not, but I think I think it's good news, and I think it's going to really help us move forward nicely with that facility. If you have any questions on these numbers, call Counselor McGinnis. If you don't like them, it's his fault. Because he's not here, so I can say that. The next item is Minister Municipal Affairs, twelve months notice, so this is standard whenever changes are being proposed. So one of those, just as an example, is that the financial contribution from the province to municipalities was frozen a number of years ago at a set amount, and this year they are looking at that. As we heard at the F, no, N S F M spring workshop, the five resolutions that were proposed from the former U N S M, I believe they said four of them were being actively looked at by the province. This is one of them, that funding model that we have been very vocal about. It's on the table. I think the only one they said that wasn't on the table was doctor recruitment, but it wasn't because the province didn't want to look at it, it's because the health authority is deemed to be separate from the province, which was news to me, that they were deemed separate, but deemed separate enough that they're working on it. So if you look at it that way, I guess all their stuff is there. Anyway, so that twelve-month notice just for the public is just standard operating procedure with hopefully good news coming at the end of it. We've dealt with the small world request, so we'll go down to reports and recommendations. We had municipal alcohol policy proposed, alcohol management on town-owned property policy, so this is our policy that is being proposed, and I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McLom, but it's in line with the M G A, and it's pretty much in line with what everyone else is working on or proposing around the province. Am I correct in that? Yeah.
Mayor Mitchell, I'm going to declare conflict in this due to business interests. If that's okay?
Yeah. Thank you for doing that. So we do have a committee, a municipal alcohol committee, that is working on a policy that they are at some point going to propose to the town of Bridgewater. This one has been deferred already, so we can defer it again, or we can approve this one and if need be, make amendments to it based on the presentation that we get or not make amendments. So there are a couple of options, but I wanted to have that discussion around the council table, but I did want to note that we have deferred this already. And this doesn't mean it's set in stone, that's what's beautiful about a policy, we can amend it as we see fit. So what is the wish of council?
It'd be my wish, I'm on that committee, the municipal alcohol policy committee, and it'd be my recommendation that we proceed and approve what we have, we've suggested here this evening, and if the committee has any amendments that council agree with, it can be adjusted. It is only a policy, and I understand they're going to be coming talking to us over the next two, three weeks, maybe, month, whatever the case. Yeah, I think they're going to make contact or leave any contact. They're both to make contact, to do a presentation to council with some of the things that they'd like to see in the policy.
Does it make sense not just to wait for the presentation? Or?
Six of one half to another.
Depends if you, I think for some, it depends if you've seen the presentation. So to me, I would, I would like to go ahead with this at least, because I don't know when they're coming, and we have events coming up that this kind of takes care of, but it still, it gives the C A O the discretion to approve or not approve. It does put some teeth into to things, instead of having to come, as we know, we had stuff come to us last week. Are we okay with this? And and so this kind of, I think it gives us some teeth.
This gives staff direction as well, which we can change, you know, should council wish to in the future.
Counselor Thor.
I'm prepared to bring that through as a motion.
Did you have any other question? No, no, okay, yes?
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approves the alcohol management on the town-owned property policy as presented in Document eighteen dash zero six one and implement as Policy ninety-three for the town effective immediately.
Can I have a second, please? Second, by Counselor McGinnis, and just again for the public and that, you know, this is a policy, we can amend it, and when we do get a presentation, whenever that time is from this committee, if council does find pieces of that or all of it that they wish to incorporate into our policy, we can do that. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried. Our next item is tender on for Dominion Street water and street upgrades. You're not in that business, right? You can come back in.
Not yet.
Yeah, so this is, my goodness, what phase is this of Dominion? Is this phase four or phase three?
Ten?
Three of five or three of four?
No, I'll talk about it.
The graph is done up so many times now, we should have put a zipper on it.
It's phase three, thank you. We mean, it's pretty straightforward, we don't really have a presentation.
Tender, no, it's low-price tender award, the breakdown of the works and the bids are in the report, so it's straightforward, it was in the budget.
Around a budget after net.
Yeah, that was my question, is it anywhere as close to what we put in the budget for this project?
We put six eighty, I think, in the budget, and this is six eighty-two.
What we got?
Funny, it's my goodness, these guys are really good at tenders.
But if I may, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to put forward the motion.
Oh, you know, put the motion forward and I'll ask my question.
Okay, yes, thank you.
That town council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of staff and award tender eighteen dash zero one E Dominion Street water and street upgrade to the lower tender Dexter Construction Company Limited at a cost of seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents, including fifteen percent H S T and a net H S T of six hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Can I have a second, please? Counselor McGinnis, and you had a question?
I do have a question, because this is, and I forget the terminology that they use, we are approving the low tender here this evening, but this may not be the final price of this project.
It's time and material. Is that what they call it, time and material?
I forget the terminology that was used, but it could be, you know, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. My concern is, is there, is there a maximum that we can approve? I mean, when, if it goes over budget by a certain amount?
We would have to come back to council.
But but will there be a trigger?
Through through the mayor to to council, with this approval and with the budget approval, we would have to come back for any any increases to this contract.
Okay, that's great.
Our hands are pretty tied, though, right? The the work is underway, it's going over budget, we have to finish it, put the street back together.
We would come back if so, or we'll work within the budget, you know, if there's a budget overage, we'll, we can come back pretty quickly.
You know what I'm a big fan of? The Public Service Commission, when they have a budget, you know where I'm going with this, they have a budget and they'll say, the budget is a thousand dollars, the project is fifty percent complete, but we're at seven hundred and fifty dollars. And they have that for, I think, everything. Certainly every capital project that they're doing. And so at any given moment, we can see that we're at ninety percent of budget, but we're fifty percent done. And so it's not that, to your point, you know, the street is halfway done, we're at six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and we're going to be in big trouble. It's, the street is a quarter of the way done, they've come into, you know, something's wrong, bedrock, whatever it is, and we're already coming off the rails. I'm wondering if there's a way to start for the, at least for these large projects, to have something like that where we're kind of kept up to date, whether it's monthly or or some kind of schedule that just says, you know what, like? that just says, you know what, like, we're halfway done the project, but we're way over already. I think that would be, I see value in that. I certainly see it at PSC. I think it's very well done. It doesn't seem to be very hard to do. You get invoices as they go along, so is that, is that something we can kind of maybe test drive with this project?
Sure. So I'm just going to try to find here the schedule, because this should move fairly quickly. So I'm just looking to see when it's supposed to start, but certainly...
Does everyone else kind of see that, like, some, I don't know, everyone's been on PSC, but...
Feel that you're accountable for the costs.
Yeah, there's no surprises in the way they do it. Counselor McDonald?
Also, we mentioned during the downtown project, the drawing, really big, and this isn't one of them, but just to put this on the table as well, really big projects that have a large impact that it may be worthwhile looking at penalties for going over and over budget and overtime. I understand that you usually have to give a bonus when they are on time, but for projects that have a major impact, it's my feeling that it would be worthwhile giving the bonus for getting things back together as quickly as possible on time. So I don't know if there's a way that we can trigger that in certain projects, or consider triggering that in certain projects.
Liquidated damages. So we can come back, and I'm not sure right off the top what our, what our current clause is with regards to liquidated damages, but we'd happy to be update council on how those can work.
Right, that would be great.
That'd be good.
I already got your fingers in this.
Any other questions? No? The motions have been made and seconded. All those in favor, those opposed? We're digging up a street. Building permit report for April is there for your perusal. So things are still moving along. I looked at that and I went, I thought we were at $1 million this time last year and four this year, but obviously we, in April of last year, we had a big project. Is that, was that that apartment? That's on, is that what that was?
Six million dollar project.
Yeah, because I was like, what happened? It's all good. So still busy. I had a few, I had a few comments from other councils around the, from around the province, who will remain nameless when I was in Yarmouth, asking what we're doing, because they're seeing, their permits are stagnant. And so they're trying to figure out what it is we're doing, where we're advertising, you know, who we're having come in and develop, and I just told them the way we do business is inviting. We're booming.
It's ironic you say that, because as some of you know, I was babysitting my granddaughter in Lance last week. I lost 10 pounds, taking an eight-month baby around the house. But no, I was at the, at the Solby store, and I chanced upon a couple of people that were talking, and I told them I'm from Bridgewater. They said, what in the name of heaven's you people doing down there? You're in the news all the time. You're doing some wonderful things with sustainability and all of that type of thing. And gave me a great opportunity to start talking about Bridgewater. But yeah, you hear this around the province quite a bit.
Yeah, it's good. It's good to live in Bridgewater. Yeah, so that's a good report. Hopefully, the public is reading those, and I do like the new format, so thank you for that suggestion. Monthly report for the Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program for March, that's there. I don't know if anyone wanted to speak to that, or if there was any, any highlights that anyone wanted to talk about in that. Okay, so that's in there for information. Facility use agreement with HB Studios Fieldhouse. So as we know, we're working through changes in recreation, and some of those changes are to maximize use of complementary facilities and not compete with them. Did you want to speak to that, Mr. Clubman?
Sure, happy to. So we've been working with the Social Fieldhouse Society on following their request for financial help. It actually came in, as the mayor said, at similar timing, where we were taking a look at how we do recreation, how we can better partner with people. And our first large foray into working with the HB Studios going forward. Obviously, council's committed a lot of money over the past towards the capital built. Is the commitment to move our summer day camps to that facility, which has been well received in the community and by staff, even the summer seasonal staff, as opportunities for programming over there. So this report puts forward a projected schedule of other programs that will be able to operate for recreation through this facility, which is on a transit route. It's a new, modern, clean facility. So it should create a win-win-win for the town, for the Fieldhouse Society, and the public with regards to recreation and community outcomes.
Thank you. Questions?
Just a question about the ukulele. Is the town of Bridgewater putting on ukulele classes? Or is that a private business? Because we're paying the subsidy, correct?
So we've provided space for ukulele. I don't have the program details off the top of my head, but I'm happy to follow up the details on the ukulele program.
That's a good question. I had, I had thought that they pay us, and then we pay HB Studios, but yeah, that's a good question.
Because my understanding in the past, the programming was run at cost recovery. But if we're now renting space, and that may have changed, so I would be interested in knowing how that's changed, if we're still operating at cost recovery, if the price of the course has gone up a little bit, or...
I don't, I don't know if we did operate at cost recovery, but that would be interesting if we did.
No, and in fact, that's going, it's going to be interesting coming back for more discussion around integrating recreation with the town of Bridgewater. One of the things I learned, for example, was that our recreation programs didn't historically rent the rooms at the LCLC, because they were more expensive than rooms at the Michelin Club. So instead of paying ourselves, we would pay elsewhere. So there is some needs for some further discussion and deliberation around how we're doing those things, but this certainly is about moving recreation programming to one of our core regional facilities. And much of the programming details need to be worked out. This is the projected plan. The, the commitment that's made so far is for the summer day camps. What I was looking for was a plan for the $25,000, so it wasn't just simply a gift, but, you know, how can we work together to make this, make this work? This could be, this could change, and we'll be back to update council on this. But what I was happy to see is clearly we're able to find use, get people over to that facility when it's empty. And there's other opportunities that'll leverage from that, and that was the intent of showing that table.
Selective motion.
Yes, please.
I move that town council of the town of Bridgewater endorse proposal for HB Studios Fieldhouse facility use and authorize the mayor and CIO to execute a letter and a manner similar to that and Attachment A of Document 18-074.
Can I have a second, please, Secretary Tanner? Any further discussion?
Just a comment. I absolutely applaud the CIO and the staff for their creative thinking here and how they're handling this whole issue. I mean, this, this is something that we've, I won't say lacked in the past, but I, I think will put us in good stead going forward. This is an important way to do business.
Yeah, yeah. No, we have to stop competing with ourselves or not using our own facilities because they're too expensive, because we forgot that we're actually paying ourselves. So it's, it's not full, we're paying half price. Anyway, it's, yeah, the direction we're taking, not always fun. As we know, we've had to make some changes, but necessary, I feel. And I think I applaud the CIO, like Counselor McGinnis said, and staff and council for making the, you know, those are tough calls. So... I had to say, do we vote on that? All those in favor, those opposed? Motion is carried. All right. Business arising, unfinished business. We have second and final reading of the deed transfer tax bylaw. Pretty straightforward, made a little bit of a change. Someone prepared to make that motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the amended Chapter 188 deed transfer tax bylaws presented in Document 18-047, adopt as by, as bylaw effective June 1, 2018, and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Can I have a second, please? Counselor Thorburn, any discussion? Question being called. All those in favor, those opposed? And there's one more, and that is basically pulling it out and putting in fees policy.
Want me to continue?
Yes, please.
The town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the amended Policy 89 fees with the addition of the deed transfer tax and an effective date of June 1, 2018.
Okay, have a second, Counselor Thorburn. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, those opposed? Motion is carried. That is, that was quicker than I thought that was going to be. So that's our council meeting. We do have an in-camera discussing municipal property. It's under the MGA. Motion to adjourn. Counselor McDonald, Counselor Fager. Thank you.